Lord, we appreciate living in this great community and those who serve. We especially appreciate those who serve in its government. Lord, we pray for those in our community who are widowed and orphaned, those who are ill and infirm, those who are hurting and in need. We pray that you would give them an extra measure of blessing and cause us to help when and where we can. Lord, again, we thank you for this city commission. May the actions that are taken here this evening be pleasing unto you, and as we leave, we pray that you'd go with us and keep us safe from harm. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Please join me in flag salute. Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would, is there any item on the consent agenda that anyone would like to pull?
I'm over, we're done.
Moved by Commissioner Hare to adopt the consent agenda. Second by Commissioner Gillum. Any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven ayes. Item two, presentation by animal control to present the pet of the week. This is a new item. Since this is new, would you, would you all introduce yourselves so we'll...
I'm Officer Woody.
I'm Officer Miller.
And this is Sophie.
What?
Sophie.
Sophie.
Yeah. Sophie has been with us since May 30th of this year.
Oh, my gosh.
She, uh, she's been with us longer than any dog that we have. She's great with kids, she's great with adults, and doesn't need to be a single dog in a household. She's just ready to find a home.
Is she outbroken or...
Do what?
Has she been inside, kept inside, or she's...
With our panel system, she always uses the potty on the outside. She's never used it on the inside.
She loves water.
She likes to play with the water hose.
How old is she?
She's approximately three. We're not the best at reading teeth, but, you know.
If somebody wants to adopt Sophie, how do they do it?
They just come down to the shelter, and if they live in city limits, they have to have a city tag, and on her not being spayed, it'd be $10, a $5 adoption fee, $25 state neuro deposit. We do require a prepaid ravis vaccination receipt from the vitriolists.
Toll number?
Eight, four oh five, eight seven eight, fifteen thirty one. Fifteen thirty one. So, yeah. We also have several box down there. You're more welcome to come down and check it out. I have one that's available that's already fixed, got it shopped for $5, out the door. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you.
Come on, baby.
Item three, citizens' participation. This is the point in that you can come to the podium if you, there's a three-minute per person limit and a 12-minute per topic limit. Tell us who you are and...
Yes. I am Taylor Shakarady, and I am the project manager for the Blue Zones Project, and I'm not great at writing and talking at the same time. I just wanted to give you all an update. I know that at the last meeting, Mayor Finley kind of put out a call to everybody to start volunteering and helping walk some more kids to school, and so from the time of that meeting until now, we do have two new walking school bus routes. So Gordon Cooper has stepped up, and they're going to have some people that help walk Horace Mann once a week, and then we have a couple of volunteers that are going to get some kids at Grove Walking once a week. So that means there's still a lot of schools that would love more volunteers, so if you're part of a service group, or you are part of anything in town, we're really trying to get as many kids walking as possible, not only because it's important for their health, but also to use all of the sidewalks that we're putting in in this city and all of the new safety features that we're trying to fit in. That's all I got. Thank you very much for helping, helping us get part of that done.
Glad to. Anyone else? Thank you. Item four, discussion, consideration, possible action to determine the selection process for municipal judge. My suggestion would be to post it as we do any normal opening and, and follow those normal protocols. I don't think we have to take any action unless someone feels differently.
I think that probably should be done.
Then, then we'll proceed to do that. On to item five, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of an ordinance to repeal and amend existing ordinances related to purchase, sale, consumption, and transportation of alcoholic beverages. Justin?
Yeah, Mayor, take this one. As the commission is likely aware, several months ago, over a year ago, the legislature updated the alcoholic beverage laws in the state of Oklahoma. Those go into effect October 1st. Primarily what that deals with is getting rid of what has always been referred to as non-intoxicating beverages, which is low-point beer. That distinction will no longer exist under Oklahoma law, and so this is just a cleanup within our ordinances to comport with those new state laws that will become effective on October the 1st. There's really nothing too significant in there. We did take the opportunity to make sure that our fees associated with licensure for establishments that sell alcoholic beverages in various formats were consistent with the state fees and at a high enough level to compensate the administrative time for the city staff. But other than that, it's really just removing references to that non-intoxicating beverage distinction that will be antiquated here in a couple of weeks.
So it's a relatively simple change in this sense. Does it create any other that we'll be aware of restrictions at all, or other premises, on-premises, or off-premises, or close to schools, or they all stay the same?
Yeah, all of that stuff really remains unchanged under state laws, and we've done nothing to, to deal with it here.
Any other questions? Would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gillum, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford. Read the title, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance providing for the repeal and amendment of ordinances relating to the purchase, sale, consumption, and/or transport of alcoholic beverages and non-intoxicating liquor or beverage in the Shawnee, Oklahoma City Code, providing for repealer, amendment, providing for an effective date, and providing for severability.
Further questions? Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item six, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 8 of the city code to add an article regarding medical marijuana.
Justin, do you have some thoughts on this?
All right. So Joe has primarily written this particular ordinance, and he and I have looked very closely together at this and what other municipalities in, in Oklahoma, and honestly nationwide, have been doing in this specific situation. The Health Department, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, August 25th is when they started accepting license applications from the Health Department.
Correct.
Right. So, so what this is, is our, our local ordinance based on the Health Department emergency rules and the new law that has gone into effect for medical marijuana. It's been, it's been a tricky one, but I, I believe the language that we put together here is, is appropriate for the, the city of Shawnee. In particular, I will highlight zoning districts that we've, we've looked at and found appropriate for the city. So if you're following along with me, this would be, excuse me, Section 8 dash 515, subsection three through five here, so really classifying four or five different types of facilities, which we have defined early on. We state that only commercial marijuana processors, growers, limited to the indoor specifically commercial districts, research facilities, and dispensaries shall be located in C-3 and C-4 districts, which would be our highway commercial district, our main commercial, main commercial district, along with C-4, which happens to be our downtown district. The reason that we selected these two particular commercial districts is based on the fact that we can't discriminate against these facilities as they, as they come in. So as retail facilities, as growers, we looked at our zoning code and found where those fit appropriately within our current standards. I have one amendment that I will, I will bring up that I would like for research facilities in particular, where I would like to see those by conditional use permit. What research I have found indicates that research facilities can be anything from a one-room operation to a industrial-sized operation conducting this research. So because of that ambiguity, I believe that should be a conditional use permit in C-3 and C-4 district. Furthermore, we've selected locations in the industrial districts as well, so I-2 and I-3, which would be our medium and high-level industrial districts, and what this would allow is locations where they're properly site-proof fenced, where there could be growing operations on the outdoors. So we would restrict that from commercial uses, but allow that under certain circumstances in I-2 and I-3. Additionally, we list for number six, the CP District, which is our, really our Shawnee Mall designation, which is very similar to, to C-3, which we've already mentioned. So all of these are completely appropriate for retail establishments as we currently allow them in our zoning. We do not allow commercial growth in our agricultural districts, that is restricted from A-1, but personal medical use, growing would be allowed in A-1. Outside of that, we really do follow the state standards that are put forward in front of us, which includes the locations at least 1,000 feet from a public or private school, which was prescribed by the state law. We've gone a little bit further in that we have included colleges and universities, juvenile or adult halfway houses, correctional facilities, or substance abuse rehabilitation or treatment centers, commercial daycare facilities, and really any other licensed establishment, they need to be 1,000 feet from those establishments. What this does is keeps us from having really a grouping of, of any type of specific use directly together, so we make sure we have that separation involved as well. Outside of that, we have medical marijuana-growing facilities for personal medical use, so this is specific for license holders for, for personal use. Growing would be restricted to the indoors. This would require licensing through the city, and some of the, some of the restrictions that were placed here, really access to these facilities being houses must be under lock and key when the resident is, is outside or away from, from their, their house. Be, once again, limited to the indoor, may not be visible from the public right-of-way, and must comply with any building and fire codes that we have established, with the inclusion of limiting on the, the lighting for less than 1,000 watts for the light. Again, this, this goes back to our, our basic nuisance standards that we have in the city, so, so making sure that, that neighboring properties, neighboring businesses aren't affected by, by any of these particular uses. That is generally what I have. Joe, do you have anything to add?
No, I think you've covered everything. This is a scenario that we, we spent a great deal of time kind of addressing and making sure that we conported with the spirit and intent of 788 and the other people. I, I would add that in discussions with staff, we, we kind of felt like this was one that might need to be vetted. There's also reference, you'll notice within the document, to a, a schedule of permit fees or other fines and fees to be set by resolution. For those that will recall, when we just finished recodifying, that's the, that's what we've gone to with basically everything we've done so that we're not setting these fees that are subject to change as time goes on to ordinance that are going to be set by resolution. And so staff's still working internally to set that fee schedule, and so I don't think that this is really ripe for passage tonight. We would suspect after further vetting, allowing you guys to take some time to look at it, and then presenting that fee schedule as part of the agenda packet for next, the next meeting later this month, at that point, it would be ready.
What, what is a research facility? Maybe you can tell me.
Sure.
Are they licensed? And you mentioned it could be one room, it could be a guy that just decided he wants to smoke his own in the place, and he gets away doing it?
Right, so we did put the definition in. We found that it would be important. Several of the facilities that they mentioned, the state simply defines these as commercial establishments, and they list dispensaries, processors, growers, and research facilities underneath that one broad definition.
Does this require somebody to have a certain level of licensing as a medical profession to do that?
From what I've, I've found, based on the state question and, and the language within, they would be receiving the license through the, the Health Department similarly. I did not, I did not see anywhere where it required additional medical licensure to do that, but to give you the, the definition we have here, a commercial marijuana research facility is a facility that conducts potency and contaminating, contaminant testing and research for medical marijuana business license.
So it's on the product itself, not the, the use on people, basically?
Right.
The research is to create stronger or less stronger various types of saleable...
Different saturations and so forth, correct.
And to use it to get these licenses does require a, someone that is licensed, such as a, a doctor, doctorate in that, to, to prescribe it?
I don't know that that's even spelled out.
It's not?
No, yeah. A doctor for personal consumption, the doctor is required to sign off on a note or form that the individual should get a license, and then that individual applies for the license with the letter and, I believe, a hundred-dollar fee to the state, but at that point, with the doctor's...
That doesn't have any impact on a research facility, though.
No, not on a research facility. It's really not spelled out.
The language is quite, quite vague.
Yeah, well, if, if you're asking, do you have to have a, an M.D. or a D.O. or a, a degree in pharmacy to have a research facility that is not...
Oh, it's more for the use of it.
Yeah, the research facility.
The people it's going to be prescribed for. I, I thought this was a medical situation. Am I wrong? Is this, are we talking about something a little bit more active here, or what have I missed? Recreational, for instance? Where's the limitations? Oh, I just want to...
I think this comes down to the, the processing side of, of what we're discussing here, so in the creation of those besides smokable marijuana, as an example, that's what they're testing and trying to comply with any of the standards at the state levels, not medical...
Well, I had moved beyond the research at this point. I was looking for the actual use of it at this point. I mean, I understand you wouldn't have to necessarily for testing or to testing the, the strength of it.
Right.
Yeah. I was saying for the people that actually use it, then, is there, is it required, then, to have a, some type of doctor's prescription for it?
Oh, it, it's not a script. I thi, I think that there's an important distinction there. You have to have a, a qualified medical professional...
Okay.
...indicate to the State Department of Health that you are a candidate for medical marijuana.
Well, that answers my question. That's what I was trying to ask.
Sure, and they apply to be certified medical professionals for this particular...
And there'd be some restrictions someplace. I was looking for it.
Yes.
Do we need a motion to defer, or can we just take no action?
I think a motion to defer would be appropriate. Make sure it goes on the next agenda, because I do think that timing is important.
I have a question just on, not, not the details of the ordinance, but on the ordinance, just an ordinance in general. If this were to be passed at some point, to, if we realize there's an omission on our part or something we've missed either way, to go back and to modify an order, modify the ordinance, is it pretty simple just to put it, put something back on the agenda and change it?
Yeah, Commissioner Rutherford, I, I think my, by my estimation, I suspect that that will happen.
It's just so new. There's so many details on either side.
Every continuing education I've gone to, every article I've read, the, the term that keeps coming up is, is Wild West, and we just don't have a lot of, of guidance as we sit here today. So again, we've worked very hard to stay within the spirit and intent of the vote of the people, but there will be cases, there will be additions by the legislature, and maybe subtractions by the legislature. This is going to be an evolving situation.
Well, there's already proposed legislation out of a committee that's been meeting, so there'll be some new legislation in, after the legislative convenes in February, I'm sure, or late January.
And really based on, on the emergency rules that were passed not but a few weeks ago, is how we best crafted the language that we have.
Okay.
But it does, it leaves, it leaves many things ambiguous. We've worked very hard on, on this draft to, again, meet the intent of, of that state question, but also be sure we're protecting ourselves as a municipality.
This may not be germane to where we're at exactly right now, I understand that, but I did notice the chief of police at one town was looking to say, well, what about, we're going, we need to reduce the fee of fines that we're showing right now for people with a pocketful. In other words, we're already seeing the erosion of, of the situation beginning, and just wonder where that's going to go.
And that's not specifically addressed within this ordinance, but I would let you know that the state law is very clear that those who, who are license holder are allowed to legally possess up to a certain limit, and they would not be cited.
You, you mentioned the Wild West, and I agree with that, and I think that was a good analogy.
Commissioner Rutherford, to answer your question, changing this or any ordinance is simple as bringing it forward to the commission?
Just didn't want to, it, it looks like there's been a lot of work put into this. Thank you for, for what y'all've done. It just seems very fluid still, and I would hate to pass or not pass, and then come back and it be a, an ordeal, or someone say we were being discriminatory by changing it later on, but I guess that's just going to be, to be expected at this point.
On this side, if you can, that is guaranteed. It is a very flexible, we brought it to you with that full knowledge. We know that there will be additions and modifications.
Our feelings won't be hurt.
No, no, it really wouldn't.
We're pretty much forced to implement something the way that the question was worded.
We are, and to really not discriminate against similar types of uses, so a lot of time is spent looking at our, our zoning code and, and picking these very specific zoning districts that we're, we're allowing it. I feel very comfortable with the ones we've added based on the language that we've been, we've been provided. Again, I would just have, if we defer this today, I'd like to make that one, one change there. Research facilities be by conditional use permit. I think that would be, be appropriate.
If we don't pass this tonight on the next commission meeting, will it have to have the emergency clause on it, or to...
Yes.
...because of the timelines?
Just because we don't want to hold anybody up that's looking to engage in this business at this point in time. They don't have licenses, which is a predicate to being able to move forward within, not with renovations or anything like that, but actually with being issued a license from the city. If we do it at the next meeting and with, on an emergency basis, we'd be able to, I think, meet all of those timeframes.
Chair moves to defer into the next meeting, which I believe is September 17th. Is that right, Lisa?
Second, Ben.
Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item seven, administrative reports, fire station renovation.
I saw mud out there today.
Not the concrete kind of mud.
No, no. Usually, I'm, I'm very happy when we have rain, but lately, I wouldn't mind if we missed some of it. I don't, wanted to start out and just give you a, just a quick update tonight, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, on the Station 2 project, where we are right now with it. Wanted to start out with a few pictures. They took these today, I don't know how well you can see those, but the light wasn't great, but one thing I wanted to point out with those pictures is, is the grading on that. It's pretty much, it's 90%, I believe, complete roughly. They were out last week doing the stabilization and, and leveling of all the concrete, something I'm really excited about, even though it's muddy out there, all the water is as far away from the building as the property will allow, and that's, that's a new thing. We're very excited about that. All credit goes to, to Michael Ludi on that. He's the one that's designed the entire site plan out there, and so very excited about, about that. When it dries out, I talked to the contractor today, they had planned on starting sidewalks and, or actually curb and guttering this week. The rain's going to push that back unfortunately a few, a few days, but they're thinking at least three days before they can get that start again, if we don't get any more rain. I've got a few more pictures, just wanted to go through with you real quick, if I could. That just shows, unfortunately, the light is not too great there, but just shows the, the south side gradient and everything.
Did you take that to 1080, by the way?
I think so. I think I did. This iPad takes pretty good pictures usually, but it didn't, I may have to do some more research on that, that'll take better pictures.
Sorry.
But we'll go through the next few, if you don't mind, Steve. You can see a pretty good, pretty good picture there, I think, of, of the backside. That's the east side of the station. You can see the add-on there, that's roughly 1,000 square feet that we added on to the east side of the station, to the app, the old, the apparatus bay. Really, that's going to be a big, big, big plus for us, having that extra area there. But also, you can see where they've got the grading complete, and they're ready for concrete, and around the, the, where the, where the grading stops there to the east, and then on back around, this is closest to us, that's the north side of the property. That's all going to have a large retaining wall holding back that, that grading, so it's really, really nice to see all that. Obviously, we've got guttering all the way around the building this time, which is, everything's totally different, so. Go to the next picture, Steve, if you don't mind, just a quick shot of the inside, that's the apparatus bay. You see they've got a lot of, still a lot of work to do in there, a lot of, a lot of materials in there, but that is from the northwest corner, looking, looking back southeast in, in the apparatus bay. You can see the app, the, the old overhead, overhead doors that are, that are gone now that were on the east side, and they go right into the add-on there. And that's, that's another shot of the bay from the, from the south, southwest corner of the bay. This is the living quarters, this is the, the day room, you see the kitchen area, the unfinished area there, over there's the kitchen. We're still waiting on the, the cabinets, the kitchen cabinets. I believe they said we'll be here next Wednesday. They're going to start millwork on the, on the window pane, the windows and, and the lavatories this Wednesday. That's another shot of the, of the living quarters, looking, looking to the south. And again, another shot of the living quarters, looking, looking back to the, to the west. Very excited about this. That's pretty much all the pictures I had. Sorry, they weren't better pictures, especially the ones on the outside, but we're incredibly excited about this. I feel so good about the work that's been done. I felt great about the, the plan that we had going into it. I feel really good about all the quality of the work that's been done. Obviously, we've had some delays and, and, but besides that, I feel, I feel, feel really good about, about all that. In addition to today, what they were doing out there, they were doing, starting the, the grinding down of the concrete on, in the living, living space, and they're going to do the apparatus bay as well. It's going to be, except for the, the locker rooms, everything is going to be sealed concrete. That'll be easiest for us to clean, keep this infected and all those kinds of things. That's pretty much everything that I did. I just want to give you a quick update, and if I can answer any questions.
I kind of hear that it's kind of a, what you've put into this is extended beyond what we've done before for utility and comfort both for the people that work there.
Yes, I think it is. I think that's fair to say. We've really tried to, to, to look at, when we first started this project, we were, we were really behind the eight ball. This, this station was in really bad shape. We reached out to, to a fire station consultant, who actually just dropped into town today. He's from South Carolina, and he was, he was in the area on another project, just dropped in to see the station. But we reached out, we tried to make sure we're doing this right. We want to get it right this time. That was the main priority, was making sure that, that, that we, any money that we put into this is, is well-invested and well-worked, and this building's going to be, you know, 40, 50 years at least. So we've really tried to make sure it's something we can, that's functional, that we can also be proud of.
Very good.
Great. Other question?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other administrative reports? Is there any new business?
Nothing to add, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioners, comment?
All righty. Not really a whole lot to say. Believe it or not, we're just a month and a half from Boo on Bell. Believe it or not, we're just a month and a half from Boo on Bell. So want to invite everybody downtown for that. It'll be the 18th to the 20th of, of October. We've got a lot of neat stuff planned. It should be a lot of fun and let's keep our fingers and toes crossed that the weather cooperates.
I gave, excuse me, Brian Luttrell. I gave each one of you a newspaper, got an article from Brian Luttrell, paper maker, about the students that went to Japan.
Yeah, what an opportunity.
I'm sorry, I didn't make them come in front of.
Well, that's okay. I'm very sure.
What did you mean to do?
I don't remember.
You're going to butt in, too? I was just going to say I was happy to have a good conversation, as we all have, with our quote interim city manager. And I appreciate it very much, the insight that I was given that way. And it's good to keep learning and to get insights from other towns, especially a lot of the experience that Eric's had. I appreciate it. Thank you much.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Can we have James talk again?
You have something else to say? You're going to wait till he starts talking and then you can.
Want to welcome our interim city manager.
Sure.
First meeting. Thank you for being here and helping us keep things on, on track. I also want to, cops and kids, we've got, what was that, week and a half ago, two weeks ago? I'm so tired from that. I was talking to the chief earlier and what, what'd your clicker say? 3,500 to?
Easily 3,500 to 5,000 people that came through there.
It was, it was a huge turnout, great event. If you didn't get to go, if we get to do that again, please come out. I think it was, it was very successful, I believe. And thanks for everyone for their help and the volunteers that we had.
I don't have a whole lot. I'm excited about the fire departments. I think that's been long coming. Interim city manager, I think is going to be a real good fit for it. So I think the transition will be good.
I'll dovetail off of Commissioner Rutherford about welcoming the city manager. And the cops and kids was unbelievable. There was cars parked everywhere. If you didn't have the opportunity to go out there, the soccer field across Independence Street to the south was full. The grass lot to the east of the expo was full. Everywhere you could park your car, in some places you probably shouldn't have parked your car, was full. And so congratulations to Chief and Commissioner Rutherford and all of those that work so hard on it. From my perspective, also want to welcome Eric, welcome aboard and look forward to working with you. Would also like to send out some special kudos to the street guys and the water guys for the, for the quick repair on Independence. Looked like that was going to be bad. It was going to be closed for a couple of weeks and they made it, made it over a period of a weekend and, and so they really jumped through hoops.
I do have one more thing. I'm sorry.
You're too late.
We had a committee meeting and we are sending out proposals for, sending out for proposals and this is one you have in front of you tonight, is one we've gotten back for, I can't, I don't know, our group, so this is on.
Great. We are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Authority. Consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford, seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question. Motion carries seven aye. Is there any new business? Seeing no new business, we are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. Would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner Gillum. Your second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Call a question. Motion carries seven aye. Is there any new business? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Adjourned, adjourned. See your family.
Back on channel, you're in.